This one came from Big Glass Hole and is for the entire forum. How will the unfunded liabilities be accounted for in the budget? You can turn that mic on and begin with Glenn.
Sure, well, by law, we have to have a balanced budget. So, any unfunded liabilities that come down through the state, come onto our plate, we don't have any option but to fund them. The same thing when we have retirement issues and VRS comes and says, you know, we owe more money than we thought we would due to the fact that we have a defined benefit package as opposed to defined compensation package in the city of Virginia Beach and we find out that we owe a lot more to VRS than we do and we've got to find money for it. The city of Virginia Beach does have basically a reserve account that we can tap into, but ultimately every time we need money, it comes either from your pockets or money that has come from your pockets previously.
Yeah, thank you. I don't think it's any surprise that over the next 10 years, the nature and scope of government is going to be changing and we're going to have to make some serious changes with it. And I think is when you have a change in the environment, when you take a look at the national debt and it's going to have its effect on the state and the state is going to have the effect on us, and ultimately the municipalities are really going to get hit hard. And I think we just have to take a really serious look in kind of, I use the term re-engineer government. I'm not at liberty to speak now, but I understand there's going to be a state-led initiative for a look at mandates at the local level. And, you know, we're just going to have to come up with a better way to make a better mousetrap as it goes along. Because the one thing about government, what's true today may not be true tomorrow, and we're going to have to look at everything.
Ditto, ditto. And in addition to that, and in conclusion, the last thing is, it does come out of your pocket no matter what. There are unfunded liabilities, meaning that it's a requirement that's pushed on city council. We have no choice but to fund it. So, it's going to get worse before it gets better. As federal government cuts, it's passed down to state government. As they cut, it's passed down to local government. Then it's sent to us sometimes as no choice but to fund it. But where does it all come from, whether it's federal, state, or local? Reach in your right pocket, reach in the left pocket, still comes out of your pocket.
Okay, thank you. Next question. This comes from Neil Mitchell and it's for Bob Councilman-Dyer. Why can't the city reduce borrowing money for their pet projects? And as an example, is a convention center in the dome?
Well, one of the things, you know, government is indeed a convoluted process and sometimes our communications really kind of are not optimal. And, you know, we had a discussion and a lot of times, and this is, you know, a great misunderstanding, that a lot of the budget items are actually discussed during reconciliation decision prior to the actual budget vote. And there were a number of us, I made a motion and I know I had some support on this, to split out the debt service, you know, to a separate vote. Unfortunately, it did not prevail. The bottom line is this, that when we go forward, I really look at private, you know, I'm kind of, I've been always skeptical about the nature and scope of public-private partnerships. And I personally voted against phase four and a few other things. I am for a convention hotel as long as somebody else pays for it. You know, that's the bottom line. And I think as we go forward, that, you know, public-private partnership, I think we're going to have to focus on core and essential city services first and then from there, you know, make some decisions. But right now, things are changing. I don't know if we're going to have the money to do a lot of things. From what I understand from the last process improvement meeting we had, we may be looking between schools and city council at a $100 million hole. And so, it's going to be priorities, priorities, priorities. And some of these public-private things, I don't think should make the radar.
Thank you, Bobby. Next question's for all three. It comes from Cynthia Prigmore. And in particular, the bike trail on Shore Drive. She wants to know, why is there a need for it when we have one that no one uses from Norfolk Ave to the beach, excuse me, and she says there's been some crime on that one bike trail? And let's start with Councilman DeStapp.
Well, first of all, there is a need for it and any Saturday or Sunday morning or any morning between 4:30 a.m., because I'm usually out there on Shore Drive riding, and about 8:00 a.m., you'll see bicycles on Shore Drive. Now, Norfolk Avenue, any Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, pretty much all day, if you're down there, you'll notice that there are bicycles going up and down there continuously. We had, last year and the year before that, we did have some crime because that's a triangle area. We have three different neighborhoods, all coming in the same area, where they come to a point right there on Norfolk Avenue. Two of the neighborhoods have some major issues from crime standpoint, the other one, eh, so-so. But when somebody would commit a crime there, they would launch into this little area and they could go one of three different neighborhoods. Well, we put a special task force together over our police department. Sergeant Sharon Wychendall led that effort and they stopped about 80% of the crime that was happening there. Has it all stopped? No. Will it all stop? No. But we're on top of it. We've got a better feel for what's happening there and we've got police advocates who are assigned to that area to specialize in finding what's happening, identifying who's doing it, and then arresting them for doing it. Well, on the crime, it sounded like you were talking about the crime of Norfolk Ave. When you're talking about the crime on Shore Drive, okay, the current bike trail that goes through the state park, there is crime on that bicycle trail. We do have police who are on top of that. That's, I don't remember which technical's name, but she's on top of that one and she's the advocate for that. So, we do have somebody working that issue as well.
Yeah, I think Bill pretty much nailed it.
You can't tell he's on bikes and trails. I think we're good on that one.
Are you on that question ready?
Yeah.
Oh my lord, I'm sorry. This next question comes from Chris Allen. It's for all three on the forum. Do you support the extension of light rail to Virginia Beach? Why or why not? And let's start with Councilman Dyer.
Oh, he's the first. That's good. Let me put it this way, you know, light rail is a nice idea, but who's going to pay for it? And one of the reasons I am a strong proponent of a referendum is it would compel a robust dialogue discussion and education process on it. Now, that being said, I've been, I guess Bill and I were described in the paper not too long ago as skeptics, you know? And, you know, being from the People's Republic of New Jersey, we have mass transit up there. The problem is that if you take a look at a map of Virginia Beach, it is not on any type of grid system that would lend support to a public, you know, type of system. You know, can you imagine, you know, catching a bus in downtown Punggol and then having it, you know, get it to the rail and everything? It's the connectivity problem. And I think what's going to happen is, you know, no project of this magnitude is, ever comes in at cost, as they say, is going to, look at our friends in Norfolk. And the point is that we've got to be careful about, you know, investing in this. Now, the other thing is, I think with the economy. Now, part of the rationale behind light rail is transit-oriented development, that if you build this rail, we'll have the skyscrapers and all that stuff. In the forthcoming economy, over the next couple of years, especially, and I am scared to death, and I know I'm elaborating here a little bit, but this is an important question. We may be looking at significant downcuts in our local economy with the military. Forty-five percent of the gross national product of Hampton Roads is directly or indirectly related to the economy. So, when you have a down economy, you know, what's the likelihood of really getting true economic development that would lend itself to support the light rail system? So, as of right now, you know, let's have a referendum on it. There's a lot of, the jury's still out on Norfolk. I mean, I'll be glad to write anything that's free. But, you know, right now, you know, let's just, the jury's way out on this thing, but, you know, like they say in Marla, Missouri, show me.
Pretty easy. In fact, and I think it was 98, 99, we put it out to referendum. People said, no. If you want to do it, put it back out to referendum. In the newspaper, Bob and I both talked as skeptics on light rail. I'm not skeptic about light rail or mass transit as a whole. When I go to New York, I ride the subway everywhere. When I go to DC, I ride the metro. When I go to San Francisco, I ride the bar. So, I've used mass transit just about everywhere I go where it makes sense. And the city of Virginia Beach doesn't make sense. Whether, whether my opinion is to go forward with it or not, we put it out to referendum once, the people of Virginia Beach said, we don't want it. Put it out to referendum before you change your mind, or if you expect them to change your mind, or see if they want to change your mind. It's like when you're a kid. Mom, can I have a cookie? Nope, not till after dinner. Dad, can I have a cookie? Nope, not till after dinner. You're not going to have a cookie, right? Not till after dinner. Let's look at the economic side of this. Twenty, I'm sorry, 33% increase in the food stamps or the new SNAP program. It's the old food stamps program. So, right now, we've got just over 25% of the city of Virginia Beach on food stamps. You've got just over 14% of our families on housing assistance. We've got, now, it was last year at 31.1%, this year is 33. something percent, so roughly a third of our kids are on free lunches. Do you think we can really spend somewhere between 1.2 and $2 billion on light rail right now? I don't think we can afford it as citizens here. But that's just my personal opinion. Put it back out to referendum and move forward from there.
So, like Bobby said, everyone, like Bobby said, this is a really important question. And why is so important is, it really isn't about the next five, 10, 15 years. It's the next 20, 30, 40 years. That's what makes it so difficult. So, we know this is an issue that's very important to the Navy. We've got a letter in city council saying that light rail and mass transit, specifically mentioning light rail, is a readiness issue for the military in the city of Virginia Beach. Is there a way of saying, if you want us to continue to be here, if you want future opportunities with the military, you better solve this mass transit issue? Now, they don't expect it to be resolved tomorrow, neither do we. We've got some other hurdles. As much as we talked about the dollar sign and is that the biggest issue, honestly, I've got another big issue, is the way the federal government is now going to determine whether which segments will get approved and which ones won't get approved. It used to be that we're going to have this thing go all the way down to the oceanfront and, look guys, if that oceanfront was just a backbone, I don't think anyone thinks that thing would be viable on its own. This whole thing isn't viable unless it becomes a robust solution, going to the schools, going to the airport, going to the bases. But now they've decided that we're going to have to approve this segment by segment. So, Norfolk's going to have to make sense first, and obviously the jury's still out on that one. Then the segment going from Newtown Road to Rosemont's going to have to make sense, and then Rosemont down to Newtown Road. And I've got a minor issue because even if I do want to have something in place, I'm not building something in Rosemont Road to find out it's going to get stuck there. So, there's still a lot of devil in the details to be worked out two years from now because the federal government doesn't want to do anything. We can't finalize or study until Norfolk is fully done. But I will say this, you know, we, if there's a decision on light rail coming down the pike in 2012, keep in mind that if we went forward with it right now, it's 2022 before you get on a rail in Virginia Beach. Even if it went according to schedule, and Bobby's right, things usually don't, it's 2022. Before it goes to places that really prove the viability of such a system, it's 2030, 2035. There's only a few of us, maybe the people on the table in front of me, that truly this is going to be there for. As much as I, you know, if we talk about can we afford it now, will we write it now? The answer's no. But do we need it 2030, 2035s? We need to make sure we take a really, really hard look because we don't get to get to 2030 and say, oh my God, I wish we would have. So, the jury's still out on it, and there's still a lot of due diligence to be done on it.
Okay. Next question, Glenn, keep the, please, Glenn, this is for you. This comes from Robert. What are we doing to build Virginia Beach tax base by enticing non-military and non-tourist industry?
Sure. Quite a bit, actually. We have a great economic development department. Warren here is in conjunction with the governor and the governor's team of enrichment. I've gone on a lot of trips and helping a lot of companies here. We have one of the largest wind turbine, windmill turbine companies in the world coming to the city of Virginia Beach to have their manufacturing. We're working on our tax base. Just recently, Salai Quinto headed, they're headed in the General Assembly. Rosemary Wilson helped push it through council. Where the first two years of a business, they're going to be able to be basically B-pole exempt. We're working on, actually, three of us up here on the table all support basing out the B-pole. And I think these guys, since they've been elected, and I know since I've been elected three years ago, have been working on a plan. I think the way you broaden the economic base is you make us a very business-friendly area. We all know the governors go around the state of Virginia, touted, well, we're number one now for businesses in the country. I want the city of Virginia Beach to be number one in the country as far as municipality goes. And we're on our way there. We continue to do things that are business-minded and business-friendly.
Thank you.
Can I just do a quick, you know, tag along? A lot of me this opportunity to make a shameless plug for the process improvement task force that we put together. One of the things that we decided to do as our first initiative is to take a look at, you know, making sure that businesses in Virginia Beach not only survive and thrive through the first thing. Ozzy Torres over there is on the committee. He's a lean six segment expert. He does process improvement for Langley Air Force Base. We've got some good people on this committee. And one thing we've got to realize is a frustration, like we're going to look at the permit system to make sure that people can get building permits a lot more user-friendly, but a serious look at what is holding back business and removing those barriers and obstacles so we can, you know, really, you know, allow the environment, you know, for existing businesses to stay open and expand, but also bring new businesses in.
Thank you, Bobby. Next questions for all three. This comes from Jimmy Frost. How do you justify increasing the debt load per citizen, a new trash fee, and millions more proposed for public-private partnership at a time when many citizens' income is falling? Let's start with Bill.
I'll start with this. I think the facts I just put out there a minute ago and year-over-year for the last seven years, or six years, I'm sorry, incomes, the average income in Virginia Beach has gone down, not up. I can't justify it. That's why I voted against it.
I think one of the, no, please, please. I think one of the things that we have to do as government's going to be changing and think that is, you know, change the process. You know, we have to have better discussions. We have to engage, you know, citizens a lot more than these two public hearings that we have. You know, things in government are going to be changing. You know, there's not going to be a lot of money there. There's going to be demand increase on local government. But that being said, that we can only, you know, spend what we bring in. I think we have to have a longer, more proactive budget process where we bring, you know, the public into the discussion. And I think that we're just going to have to do a much better job about setting priorities and go back to core essential functions of government down there. But once again, a lot of it's going to be in a real makeover of the process.
So, I've had a chance to talk, I guess, to this group a few times on my thoughts on debt. And I truly believe the same thing today that I believe last year and the year before. You have good debt and you have bad debt. The bad debt's the debt you use that pays for operating expenses. It's the debt, it's the money you spend that produces no revenue and doesn't actually cover the debt service. Good debt is when I go borrow a dollar and debt service is 50 cents and I make $3 every month. That's good debt. That's what we need to be careful of in the city of Virginia Beach. We have a lot of debt on our books. We're very fortunate and even Standard and Porches, Moody's, and Fitch all recognize that the majority of the debt on the books is what they, is classified as good debt. It's the debt that's spent, that when it's spent, produces revenue in excess of the debt service. I just had an opportunity, three weeks ago, my business, to have to practice what I preach. We had a company from India call us. They wanted us to look at being their US-based call center. And they turned to us and said, we want to give you a contract. We'll make an upfront payment, but you need to have this infrastructure and you need to have these people. And I didn't have the resources to do it. I had to go take out debt. Now, I could have said, debt is bad and God knows, in this economy, the last thing you want to do is take on the additional debt. Or I could have said, I'll take that debt on knowing that the revenue I get from performing under this contract will help me pay the debt service and still make my company profitable. And that's what we did. And that's what the city of Virginia Beach needs to make sure it does for its taxpayers. If we're going to go and we're going to bow to borrow a dollar on your heads or your child's heads, I need to be able to look you in the eyes and say, you know, we've got it covered. Because that dollar borrowing produces $2, which means you and your children will have more money than the city of Virginia Beach can reinvest and give you and your family a better lifestyle. We have not maybe always done that in the future, we can all think of, or in the past, and we can all probably think of a couple of projects, but I've been on council for three years and I can say, when I've seen this come through, it's been good decisions and we need to make sure that we make those tough decisions in the future.
I just want to follow up on that one. One quick thing, sorry. The primary role of government, safety and security of our citizens, infrastructure and education. Right now, if you look at the national debt at federal level, state level, and local level, it's not going to be paid by me. It's not going to be paid by my kids. It's not going to be paid by my grandkids. It's going to be paid by our great-grandchildren. Thomas Jefferson and Monroe Bull said, you know, the debt should be paid by the generation that incurs it. That's not happening right now. We're going the wrong direction. The city of Virginia Beach, I'll just hit one tiny debt thing, debt issue. Right now, the Virginia Beach Development Authority issued bonds, or has bonds issued at $350, $370 million. The principal is $351 million. The interest is $154 million, 31% for a total of a half a billion dollars. That's not going to be paid by me. That's not going to be paid by my grandchildren. That's going to be paid by the next generation after that. What's happening right now is unconscionable with debt. There's no plan that pays off our federal debt in the next 30 years, the next 40 years. I've not seen a plan to pay it off, period. It gets us at a level playing field, but it doesn't pay down the debt. We can't continue this way. What's the primary role of government? It's okay for private industry to take on debt. That's a good thing. They produce something. The government doesn't produce anything. It takes taxpayers' money and it spends it, period.
Very quickly, Glenn, and then we're going to move on to the next question.
Well, I just wanted to clarify. You talk about, well, you know, we're going to take more taxes from you, but we're going to get all these dividends. I don't get a check from the city, dude!
Jimmy, Jimmy, Jimmy.
So, I don't want any more of your money either. So, Bill's right about the federal government. There's not a plan in the federal government that pay this debt down in our generation. And I'll tell you something, there's a lot of opportunities for improvement in the city of Virginia Beach, look at its government. Definition of government is, well, in some cases inefficient, but we do a lot of things right. And I'll tell you something, if the federal government ran like the city of Virginia Beach, it would not be where it is today. You can read any of our finance reports from Moody's, Standard and Porches, and Fitch. And the reason why we're AAA bond rating, there's only, there's only one of us, I think, in the state of Virginia, or one of us municipality here, very few our size, is because of how tight we are in our financial practices. At the end of the day, Bill, our debt is getting paid by this generation. You know as well as I do that the city of Virginia Beach does have debt service plans in place. We're not the federal government. We don't have to work on taking it from one generation to the next. The fact of the matter is, is we're sitting here today in the city with the lowest tax, individual tax burden in the Hampton Roads area because of the investment practices of city of Virginia Beach. You've got the next lowest in Hampton at a buck four. From there, it just goes up and up and up. You're also, from a, from a total tax and fee perspective, paying $100 less in the city of Virginia Beach than you would in any other municipality in Hampton Roads area. That next one being Chesapeake goes up from there. We have a lot of things to be thankful for. Can we improve? Oh, yes, we can. Bobby, Bill, and I have a lot of ideas to make this thing even better. But we're doing well and we're doing it because we have made some of the tough investment decisions that have paid dividends in the past, or you have the same tax bracket, Jimmy, that they have in Hampton and Portsmouth.
Okay, let's move on to the next question.
They've got the big guy sitting in the middle here.
All right. This is quick, all right? Two quick replies. What percentage of the city's budget is the school board's budget? And if you cut the city's budget, do you also cut the school board's budget? Bobby?
Okay, right now, I guess the formula is around 51%. Probably actual in reality, you know, with the, you know, take back is less. And the point is that, you know, we're in this boat together. And somehow, we've got to build bridges with the school board. And, you know, I'm personally, I think a lot of people are disappointed that we don't have better relationships with the school board. That being said, we are in this boat together. And I hate to use the term dire predictions, but I guess they call me Dr. Doom on council because I'm the one that's been saying what's coming, what's coming. When we did the Blue River Report years ago, we said there was going to be a perfect fiscal storm that's going to affect this. Well, guess what? The reality is here now. And the point is, we have to make the commitment that somehow, some way, that the kids in the classroom are going to be well-funded. And, you know, to that, I think we can pledge. Now, the devil is going to be in the details in the future, as resources become scarcer and scarcer, we go back to this debt thing again. You know, when you pay heavy money on debt, that's money not going to goods and services. And the point is, if, you know, I think Bill kind of touched on it before, we have to focus on the four main priorities of government. And that to me, and I think a lot of other people, public safety, education, health and human services, and public works, infrastructure. Those are the ones that you focus on and then, you know, we've got to set priorities. And I'll tell you what, we may have to, you know, downsize government.
On right over a billion-dollar budget, I think 1.2 billion last year, we pay right over 10% to service that debt. Okay? So, right over 10%. I think I can find better usage for that money if we could pay down our debt. Let's look at this. And again, this ties back to education. Debt outstanding beginning of the year, this is year 11, 900 million. And this is just net tax-supported debt. This is only one piece of it. Budgeted and projected for fiscal year 12, 1 billion. How much was issued? $103 million. How much was retired? $79 million. What does that tell you? $32 million of additional debt is being issued this year over last year. Can't pay it off if you keep increasing it.
So, just briefly, a lot of extra money because of governor's transportation plan. We get that money bad, but we have to go spend it on roads first and then the government gives us our money. But going back to education. So, we have a $1.8 billion budget. Like Bobby said, you stood on the 51% or so goes to, goes to schools. We need to make sure, right now, we have one of the top five, I guess, best educational, or what is it, one of the best top five municipalities for education of children. And we need to maintain that. That's why people come here. I can talk to them blue in the face about bringing in jobs here, but the fact of the matter is, is I can bring jobs here, but the workers don't come unless their kids can have a good education. So, we need to make sure that we continue to fund the schools at the level they need to provide that top level of education that allows us to put that into our economic packages to entice businesses to come here and entice good, quality, skilled labor to come here. One thing I'm really happy about, you know, you hear about this stuff in the paper with school boards and council, and I think the three, well, I know the three of us up here are really good friends with just about everyone on the school board. It really is a tight relationship. And you see some of the stuff they're doing, and they're doing a tremendous job down there. I'm happy that the water renewal processing, whatever it was at Kellum isn't there. I thought that was a little bit of an overkill, but I'm really excited to go see that school open as the state-of-the-art school. I'd be there for generations to come and provide that learning environment that we've been talking about.
Okay, thank you. Next question is for all three. Comes from Waverly Woods. Subsidies, hotel in Dome, a run-through Economic Development Council. Why is our money not having a referendum? If it's under 10 million, no referendum. Again, our money and we have no say. Let's start with Bill DeStapp, please.
Oh, you gave the wrong, mic's the wrong person on this one. When it comes to subsidies like this, here's the problem. We run it through the Virginia Beach Development Authority the same way we did the last convention center. Now, think about this for a minute. It was over $10 million, put it out to referendum, people didn't want it. They said, no. So, what do we do? We send it over to the Virginia Beach Development Authority. I'm sorry, we didn't put that one out to referendum. We put the headquarter hotel out to referendum. People said they didn't want it.
We put the headquarter hotel out to referendum, people said they didn't want it. We ran it through the development authority, convention center, we did not put out to referendum. But instead of putting it out to referendum and having the people say no, what do we do? We run it through the development authority. It's a way around the system, it's a loophole. Right now, well, I'll stick to this question only. Do I support a subsidy of it? Absolutely not. And I've got a couple of things when we get to the next question, not either of these.
Yeah, I think as we make decisions in the future, we really have to bring the public to the table on it. I know you elect us, and I know that, you know, for instance, even with Light Rail, we talked about referendums, we're talking about advocating our responsibilities. But I really believe in public and civic engagement, in bringing you all to the table, and having a well-discussed, thought-out, and, you know, there has to be a better education process. One of the things we really wrestle with on councils, how do we engage with the public better? We don't do a good job at that right now. So, when a issue comes up, you know, we have to have more public forums, get more input. And the thing is, we've got to make decisions based upon the same way that the private sector does. Do a profit-wal statement and everything, put everything out on the table, and then make a decision based on sound business practice, and convince the public that it's going to be in their best interest.
So, I think part of my answer on debt, I assume the public-private, but I'll take a second and talk about referendums since that's part of the question from Waverly, and it goes back to Light Rail and some other stuff. Those of you that have talked to me about Light Rail, now I'm not a big fan of referendums. I've had a lot of people come up, and we've talked about referendums, and said, Glenn, I just want you all to make the decision. There's two reasons why I think the decision should be made at the council level in multiple areas. First, a lot of people love just to make the tough decisions because there is a lot of due diligence, there is a lot of late nights, there is a lot of material to digest, and they want to look to the officials to do it. But more importantly, I think for referendums, shortcut your voice. Here's why. When I make a tough decision, I'd like to have a lot of meetings, a lot of town hall opportunities, and if you notice, when we have these things over different things, Light Rail, the SGA's recently, I go to them. I want to hear your input, because we don't always have the right decision, or the right ideas, and the right answers. But having those open conversations flushes them out. If it's a referendum, all cities and governments are asking for is to go to their ballot box and tell me yes or no. Yes or no doesn't help me. What helps me is why or why not? So, I think governments use referendums to shortcut their obligation to actually come out and talk to you, and ask you open-ended questions. That's what I'd rather have. Although, I will tell you, in the case of like Light Rail, if the city council puts Light Rail as a referendum, I'll abide by it a hundred and ten percent. But at the same time, I wish that when it comes to Light Rail's referendum potential and this other stuff, that we just have more public, open meetings, that we can have discussions and come up with the perfect solution for all of us. And I hope to see more of that.
Okay, let's move on to the next question. This comes from Carolyn Meads. Says, our money is appropriated to the school board for education, and the school board balances the budget, and then saves money by taking tough fiscal responsible decisions. Should that money be used by the school, or give back to the city council for their use? Let's start with Bobby, please.
Okay. Once again, we've got to build some bridges here. And, you know, the fact is that, you know, whether right, wrong, or indifferent, yeah, the money was, you know, taken, you know, to balance the budget. And I think what has happened is a meltdown in communication between the school board and the city council. This can't be acceptable. A couple of years ago, I made a recommendation that we go to a more workshop form of government, and we actually designed it to have the school board come to, you know, and sit with us on a periodic basis to discuss problems, and to discuss why we do certain things. See, when we do things like trash fees and everything else we do, a lousy job at least giving the background and the rationale before, you know, to the people. I'm going to make the recommendations as we go forward, that we have more joint meetings with the school board, that we have more workshops with them. But the bottom line is that we're going to be in a severe budget crunch in the future. And, you know, the point is, tax money is going to be tax money, and, but, you know, the one thing we have to commit to is that they're properly funded in the classrooms. But, you know, like I said, the economy's changed, the government's changed, and we've got to change with it.
Yeah, it is. Our biggest issue, I think, with the school board really is just the communication amongst the bodies as a whole. I know the three of us call the majority of them quite often, but don't do a very good job about putting all twenty-two of us in a room at the same time and having discussion. I mean, at the end of the day, it's all tax money, it's all year tax money, it's all paid by you for the city of Virginia Beach to provide you and your families the best lifestyle that it can. And that includes education. And how that money is spent needs to take into account the needs at the school level and the needs at the city level. I've always said that I get a CIP package every year, which has all the roads and all the infrastructure needs of the city, and it's all prioritized. And the schools have theirs. And I'd rather see one that prioritizes the schools and the cities together. You know, it's not, there are many school projects that should take precedence over city projects, and probably many cities' projects that should take precedence over some of the school projects, but the fact of the matter is, I get two different books that don't compare the two. So, I really think having a better interaction between the two bodies would give us a lot better results for you and your families. MC London, put your hand up real quick. She works for a healthcare organization. Let's say today it's Bill's Healthcare. I pay MC fifty thousand dollars a year. She'd want to spend more than that, wouldn't she? Yep. She doesn't. She scripts, she saves, she saves five thousand dollars a year. At the end of the year, I go in, I take that money back from her, I said, MC, you didn't spend it. And I take that money back, and it goes back to Bill's Healthcare. How fair is that? MC has grown up learning from her parents and her grandparents to save her money, to be fiscally conservative, fiscally responsible. What do I do? I go in and take the money back at the end of the year. Is that fair? I don't think so. That's why I voted against it the last three years, that we took it from the school board when they saved it. Thank you.
Next question? Glenn, the next question comes from MC, and we're going to start with Glenn. In the 2012 budget, if we fund, that a program was funded, but find that the program was not fully vetted through studies and true cost of the program, do you think the city should proceed on this foundation, or take a step back and work on a solid plan? Glenn?
Well, I never believe you throw good money after bad. Hopefully, we never start a project without fully vetting it and finding out the situation before we go forward with it. But the minute we find out that our reality does not meet expectations, I think we need to take the step back, readjust, and hopefully, we can find a better path to go and continue forward with them. Assuming that MC's got a program set in mind over there, so we catch up after this.
Yeah, I think as we go forward, there has to be a better business process. And as we start looking at government, you know, there's necessary, and there's nice, there's essential, non-essential. And we have to take a look at programs that are not working, and find out where they might be able to be, you know, combined with other things. And, you know, let's just use some common sense government and budget to say that we do in our homes. You know, we're going to have less money to work with. And the bottom line is that, you know, we just have to put a little bit more sound business practices together, and take a look at it. And I think everything's got to be on the table in the future. And, you know, like I said, government is going to be changing, but once again, you know, public, and I know I got in trouble for this when I said it last time, people are going to have to change their expectations of government. They can't be the all and the all to a lot of people. And, you know, the thing is, we got to do it better, we have to improve the process.
Ditto, ditto. Let me add a specific to it, give you an example. Dredge, spoil, transfer site. So, I'll throw the elephant on the table. The CIP says dredge, spoil, transfer sites, plural, for dredging in the city, okay? Once the CIP gets approved by city council, there's no real details in there, it says we're going to do dredge, spoil, transfer sites. Once it gets approved, then they start the engineering, they look at how many do we need in the city? How do we move forward from here? The devil's back in the details. This is where true leadership comes in. Understanding the process, understanding what's happening, and then helping the community stand up and fight for specific things. There are things that we can do, there are things we can't do. Oh, by the way, I'm on beaches and waterways, and this is one of my issues as well. You know, again, certain things are out there, we're looking at multiple dredge, spoil, transfer sites. Not one we're looking at, I think it's five or six right now in the city. It's not the CIP that way. Heck, we haven't even started negotiations on three of the sites. But we've been down there, we've looked at them, and we're moving forward. Again, it's just the way our bureaucratic process is broken. It's one of the, one of the things that needs to be fixed. And people don't trust government, that's why we've got the large groups coming out and saying, hey, you're not telling us the details, you're not going to tell us if you're going to go through with dredging three days a year, or three hundred and sixty-five days a year. I added a date, you know, that whole leap year thing, and then we've got the new 2012 calendar from the whole MINE thing coming out, so I keep adding days. It's only running on three hundred and sixty-seven days. And I still won't get rest.
A little bit longer, let's do it.
I'm going to come back because some people have come up to me, and they said they don't think that this question was asked, and it's very important, so I'm going to start with you, Bobby. What percentage of the city's budget is the school board's budget?
Based on my understanding, it, you know, it's supposed to be around fifty-one percent, but with the take-back, it was around fifty percent.
Okay, Glenn?
Well, in the beginning of the year, it's fifty-one point three, and then obviously, some stuff came back.
Okay, Bill?
That's facts. It started as fifty-one point three, and it ended up at forty-nine point nine, something at the end, with the decimal points.
Okay, second part of the question, Bobby. And if you cut the city's budget, do you also cut the school board's budget?
This is where, you know, they pay me the big bucks, to be honest. A lot of the stuff that comes up, that issues that we have, is with the funding formula. And I know our friends on the old school board are not going to like what I'm going to say. But I remember when I ran unsuccessfully in 2002, we also had the question about, should there be a formula, or should there be, you know, based on need? And I've always, you know, and I teach budgeting over, you know, Regent University. And when we just give X amount of money to any organization, you know, how do we know that that's the right amount of money? Some years, it's going to be adequate, some of the years it'll be low, other years it'll be high. And the thing is, you know, I'm not sure if the formula is the best, most efficient budgetary tool we can do it to achieve the outcome that we all want.
So, very similar to Bobby's, I mean, it's a funding formula, fifty-one point three percent. The direct answer to the question is, if we shorten our budget, do we shorten the school boards? Well, it's all about funding streams. Right now, inside that funding formula, there are seven, nine, seven revenue streams that they get fifty-one point three percent of, and so that's how they get their money. In the future, do we readjust, readdress that? I think we do. Bobby's right, you know, we go back to MC's scenario with Bill, you know, he gives her fifty thousand dollars, and she hasn't spent it all, and then Bill wants some of it back. Well, the fact of the matter is, if MC only needed twenty-five thousand to begin with the run of department, and you gave her fifty, then hopefully, there is twenty-five thousand dollars left over there. We have an arbitrary funding formula. The reason why it's arbitrary is when we first put together, they didn't know what they needed, schools or cities, and they said, you know, last year looked like it was about fifty-one point three percent of these funding streams, let's make it fifty-one point three percent. Now, we have a lot of business owners in here, but I don't know how many of you go to your department heads and say, look, I'm going to give you this much money, whether you need it or not. And that's the situation we're having. I'm like, Bobby, I came into city council three years ago, talking about a needs-based budget. I think we need one. I know that causes more pressure on us because we have teachers and school people coming directly to us to justify the dollars, but the fact of the matter is, that's why you lent it us. So, I'm all there for a needs-based budget as well.
I fully support a needs-based budget, but I think where the question was going specifically was, if the city has a, let's say, twenty-four-million-dollar shortfall, where do we get that money? Well, last year, we took it from the schools. Was that evenly split? Nope. Just took it from the schools and used that to cover our shortfall.
Next question. This is for Glenn. Comes from Bill Barnes. Based on your definition of good debt versus bad debt, what is Light Rail?
That would be a question that only would come from Bill. No, so this probably takes more than sixty seconds to answer. Bill, to tell you the truth...
Sixty seconds.
Yeah. I don't think I have the answer for you yet. I don't have, well, and I'll tell you why.
Your definition.
Sure, sure, sure. I'll tell you why. I don't know what it's going to truly cost us yet, because, and I don't know where the money's going to come from. So, if, if there is a good, solid business case... Hold on, Waverly, this is a really good question. So, if there's a, if there's a good, solid business case that we think that the tax growth or round Light Rail is going to cover the financial impacts to the city of Virginia Beach, then I think it meets the definition of good. If that doesn't happen, it meets the definition of bad. Now, here's, here's why it is hard to answer at this point. If, if you look at the opportunity losses, so, let's say we don't have Light Rail come here, and it is a reason for the military to say, you know, guys, we told you it was ready in this issue, we're not staying here, we're gone, the carrier's gone. And if we lose other opportunities because we don't have Light Rail, then I would say it was good debt, because you don't just look at what you're going to get, but also what you're not going to lose. And I'll give you a prime example. Go back and look at the interstate system, back before the interstate system came up. Look at some of those localities that said, oh, no, it is not coming through our town. And look at some of those localities today. So, those are things we need to be careful, and that's why it's such a tough decision on Light Rail, is it's not just about what might we get, it's what are we going to lose if we don't make that decision? Thankfully, we don't have to make it yet, and we've done through that analysis, though. But that was a great question.
Thank you. Next question is for all three, comes from Eileen Lendowski. I hope I pronounced your name correctly, I apologize if I did. As the General Assembly will likely be considering legislation to lift the ban on uranium mining, what words of wisdom do you have for our Virginia Beach delegation?
Don't do it. You know, I think, you know, one of the things is, you know, especially, and I got to defer back to Louis Jones, you know, he worked on Lake Gassen for, you know, a long time. And, you know, even the thought of jeopardizing our water supply, and, you know, the gentleman that came in before council not too long ago to give a rationalization on how safe it would be and everything, boy, that dog did not hunt. And I think as we go forward, we've got to think ultimately of safety, and worst-case scenario. And I think, you know what the really funny part was? He came in on the day of the earthquake, you know? So, once again, they're talking about this, you know, these shafts that all protect all the stuff and, you know, everything, and meanwhile, there was an earthquake that day. So, I think, and sometimes, in government, there's always the law of unintended consequences, but I'll tell you why, I think it's better to be safe than sorry.
Well, we spend a lot of time in water suppression sources, we should not do anything to compromise integrity of our water, our water supply, or our aquifers. You know, I had a chance to meet with the other side, a couple rationale of why there shouldn't be an issue, you know, that hundred-year story mentality. And, and I said, you know, guys, like Bobby said, you know, you came in to give us a presentation on the day of an earthquake, but more importantly, this is a logical and rational issue for most of us up here. I mean, this is our water supply. You know, I can't afford to be wrong and mess up our water supply for future generations. This isn't something where I get to say, you know, sorry, guys, I made a bad decision. This is something that truly has significant impacts, this is an emotional decision, a logical decision. That being said, I want to make sure all of us making our decisions are educated, and one thing that upsets me is I have yet to get anyone to put both sides in the same room at the same time. We get briefed by the uranium mining people, I get briefed by, you know, my city staff, and I can't get both of them in a room at the same time, because there is a little bit of fear-mongering going on. So, I think what you're going to find out is you're going to have, almost all of us, if not all of us, saying, look, we can't afford to be wrong, we need to be very careful, and this is not something we can jump on board with. But at the same time, I think we all seem to make sure that everyone gets all the information out there, and that's what we're trying to do right now, is making sure that we have all the facts to begin with.
Okay. Next question is for all. This comes from Mary Lou Evelyn. Talking about, excuse me, talking about programs that are not working, who, and I'll emphasize that word, who determines that, and what is the process we're evaluating this?
I'll tell you, I think right now, it's dismally inadequate. And one of the things that I think that, you know, I've been striving for, and I know Bill and Glenn have, you know, the three of us here, is to have our workshops become, actually workshops, not staff briefings. You know, we want to do the talking among ourselves, and, you know, figure out what's going on, and take a look at the programs and everything. You know, I think one of the, you know, the big misconceptions is how much power the, you know, city council have, and city manager, form of government. Ultimately, the only people that are accountable to us are city manager, city attorney, tax assessor, city clerk. And we also have Lincoln Rignes, our internal auditor under us because of the Republicans on this council. And the thing is that we got to do a better job of getting better information. And the thing is, as I get on my soapbox too, I think an important thing about flushing out what programs are thinking, the public has to get engaged better. You know, we have to get out there more, into the village, and listening to the people, and then find out what's working for them and what's not. But in answer to your question, we got to do a better job, and I think it's got to start right now, because I think, you know, the cards that we're going to be dealt with are going to dictate this. It's going to be necessary.
Yeah, I'll agree with Bobby. I mean, it also goes into the workshops. Most of you know that we can't put more than two council members in a room, or on a telephone for that matter, and discuss city business. So anytime city business is basically discussed, has to be inside these workshops. So having more time to sit down and actually have discussions or debates amongst ourselves would flush out a lot of opportunity with regards to, you know, efficiencies in some other programs, should we not undertake different things. But I think it comes, that's the majority of it, and then the citizen involvement on the all side. I had an opportunity recently to be involved in the Rosemont SGA process. I think they didn't want to put up on that. I think they had seven or eight open opportunities for citizens to come and be engaged, and we got a lot of information, so much so that we actually changed the plan a couple of times. And even on the redistricting meeting, Louis and I, I had the honor of serving with Louis on the redistricting committee to redistrict the council seats in the city of Virginia Beach. And we had, I think it was four open briefings and town halls with the citizens. And I can tell you, we went through, I think it was eight maps, because every time we drew a map, a neighborhood had a problem, and we had done something we didn't recognize and went back and fixed it. And eight maps later, I can say that there is not a neighborhood that came to us with the problem that we did not address on that final map. But that's the type of interaction we need.
Well, Mary Lou, I'm going to give you an example. I ditto what both of these guys said, but I'm going to give you a specific example of how we fix those processes. Thursday night, February something of this past year, got down to 17 degrees outside. I had a call Friday morning from a young lady with a single dad who goes to Christopher Farms, a single son, I'm sorry, a single mom with a son who goes to Christopher Farms Elementary School who spent the night in her van. Why'd she spend the night in her van? She had gone through and requested emergency, again, the term emergency homelessness money. What that's supposed to be there for is to turn money around within three days if you need to pay your rent. And you can't, and you've gone through every process. We've got emergency money to pay your rent, $333,000 a year. Here's what happened. She had worked with the city for a month trying to get some of these funds broken free. Never had. So I worked with her Friday morning, and I said, "Don't worry about it. We'll take care of you tonight, and I'll figure out a way." I'm a member of this group called the Noblemen. We figured out a way to cover her through Monday. So this is Friday morning. Get the city engaged, Director of Housing. Well, you know, we've worked with her. And I said, "Has she put an application in?" Well, she's called. Has she put an application in? Nope. So walk me through the process here. So we start going through the process. Here's the process. You call in. The phone, there's five people that charge to this program every year, $333,000 a year. Five full-time employees, I'm sorry, four and a half full-time employees charge to this. One person answers the phone from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. That's it. Five hours a day. One person answers the phone. So I asked a hard question. How many applications do you get done in one day? Her answer? One. One in five hours. How many calls do you take a day? Two. On average, I take two calls a day. Why? There's so much paperwork, it takes me forever to get this done. And I said, "Well, you know, so I called in to try to see how you can get through to this number." Four and a half hours later, I got a ring. It rang three times, and it said, "Oh, we're closed. Call back tomorrow." Wonderful program, right? Again, four and a half people charging to it. So I asked the next hard question. How long does it take to get money out of this program? We're not sure. This is from our Director of Housing. We're not sure. Again, emergency homeless grant. What does emergency mean? It doesn't mean, hey, we'll take care of it in six months from now. The last five different cases of that, the quickest one was 64 days. 64 days? Is that emergency? Nope. This is, so I asked the next hard question. How do you keep track of everybody who calls in? Is there an answer machine? Is there a queue? Is there something? Do you have a waiting list? No, we don't have any of that established. I'm like, are you kidding me? I mean, what world would anyone accept these kind of answers? So again, this is the example of a program that's broken. What do we do to get it fixed? Well, grab the city manager, pull him in. Grab the Director of Housing. Grab the Director of Human Services. We sat down, we had a discussion on this. Now, keep in mind, this was Monday morning, three days after she was moved out of her apartment, and all of her stuff was on the curb. Everything she owned was put in her van, period. And that was just a whole bunch of clothes. Everything else was left there. It couldn't fit anything else in. So Monday morning, they had spent the night at one of our hotels at the oceanfront. The owner's a friend of mine, and through the Noblemen, we paid a nice, cheap rate and took care of her, so she had a warm place to stay. She had a temporary job at one of our local restaurants. But while this is all happening, we're going through the bureaucratic process to see how quick we can get her money to get a place to stay, who's a single mom whose son goes to Christopher Farms Elementary. And, you know, Friday morning, the boy went to school, Monday morning, the boy went to school. On Wednesday, with all of these guys, I mean, we're talking about, a lot of the guys on council hurt, to be honest. I was beyond frustrated, I was beyond perturbed. I was fired up to the point of ready to beat the living tar out of somebody. It was unbelievable. I'm going to make this quick. The bottom line is, unless a council member or two council members get involved when something is broken like this, and unless you tell us about it, we don't know it exists. We think, when you have a program called emergency homelessness, we think that it's taken care of. We think, geez, if you have an emergency, you go, you make a call, and it's done. Not it's done 64 days later, and that's the quickest we've done it in a year. No, we don't think about that. We think it's done pretty damn quick, because it's emergency homeless. It's ridiculous. But that program right now is fixed. We have a waiting list, we have a queue, and on average, we get it paid within a week. But it's taken, it took me, Paradise Al, I know Bob got involved, I know Glenn talked about it. I mean, we had to beat the living tar out of a bunch of people to make this happen. That's bureaucracy at its finest. And my other question was, why the hell did we have four and a half people, it's called waste of our own abuse, when you have four and a half people charging to a program that's $333,000 a year, and the salaries of these individuals add up to $296,000 a year? That's waste of our own abuse. So... Otherwise, we don't know what happens. We give a cute little names, emergency homelessness. You know, we give a cute little names, we assume it's working until somebody tells us otherwise.
Okay.
You don't have a process where these different departments report back to you? Can you some type of report?
They report to, they report to, they report to the city manager. We don't have...
There's your answer.
It's the city manager form of government. The Director of Housing...
Why don't he report to you?
Exactly. Because the city manager? Because you need six votes to fire him? We've never had more than five since I've been on council for the last five years.
Okay. We're going to move along. This will be the last question, and try to do it in 60 seconds. This comes from Tanya, Tanya Army. Please explain more about process improvement initiatives. How will a process improvement strategy defeat the current culture? End quote. Culture beats strategy. Let's start with Bobby. 60 seconds.
Thank you. And first of all, let me thank you all for being here, because you're a part of the process. You're here every week. And I'll tell you what, the process is improved when there's accountability. So I thank you all for being here. A number of us, you know, the Republicans on the city council helped with an initiative to form a process improvement task force. And we're just up and running. We just got our act together, we got it approved. And the idea is to bring the business community, to bring the public together to work with the city management and to work with the council to come up with ideas. And, you know, we picked a couple of projects just to get going. But, you know, what Bill well-articulated is a process problem. It's the idea of communication and connecting the dots. We don't do that well. I recently went for an application, you know, for my backyard, and somebody told me I needed a wetland stamp that was going to cost me $350. And when I got up there, "Oh, you don't need that. It's set back far enough and everything." You know, we got some very remarkable people that do work for the city. And one of the problems we have is we do not connect the dots, and we don't articulate, we don't communicate well with each other. But I give you my word, as our process improvement task force, and we have some remarkably talented people on this thing. And we're actually going to be forming ad hoc groups that, you know, citizens, we're going to be soliciting input, so people can come to the table and take an outside look. And my 60 seconds is almost up. One of the biggest problems that we have in government, okay, is that a lot of times, we go from issue to issue every week. We stand in the forest and don't see a tree. We need the public to help point out where the trees are. Thank you.
Well, I think I gave one good example that kind of said our process is broke. The other problem is, as Bob said, it's accountability. The city auditor, city assessor, city attorney, city clerk, and city manager work for city council. We work for you, the citizens. You've got to keep us on top of this. The other part of this is, we can only fire those five people. I can't go down and fire the Director of Housing when that program had that issue. I tried. I made the recommendation, but I can't do it. It's against the law for me to do that. Now, let me give you another example. We just went through Hurricane Irene. Over across where I used to live, a mile from my current house, we had six docks in a row all ripped up. The city was going to make everybody go through a $1,350 permit process with wetlands boards and everything else to redo their docks the way they were before. And I said, "This is ridiculous." So I went down, I met with planning, I met with beaches and waterways, I met with our wetlands folks, and I met with permits and inspection. And I sat with them, and they said, "Well, you know, we don't know that the dock they're